Hello and welcome to American Motherhood. I'm Bethany, a liberal mom of two in central Ohio, and I'm on a mission to bridge the divide between liberal and conservative moms through honest, respectful conversation. Today, I'm joined by Mark Fabel, candidate for Westerville City Council. Mark is a husband, father, stepfather, small business owner, and financial professional who has served our community through groups like the Chamber of Commerce, the School PTA, and the Westerville Education Foundation. We talk about why he's running, how his experiences shape his leadership style, and what he loves most about Westerville. His campaign centers on the idea that city council should stay in its lane, focusing on essential services, safety, and fiscal responsibility. Mark and I hold different beliefs, and you'll hear how I aim to understand his perspective as he shares his vision for our city. If this conversation resonates with you, I'd love to hear from you at AmericanMotherhood@gmail.com. I continue my search for a conservative mom to co-host this podcast with me so that together we can explore how politics and society shape the motherhood experience in America. Please take a moment to share this episode with a friend, leave a review, and subscribe to American Motherhood on your favorite podcast app. Your support helps us reach more voters and continue bridging the divide one conversation at a time. Okay, let's dive in. Mark, thank you for joining the American Motherhood Podcast to talk about your run for Westerville City Council. It's great to have you here.
Well, thank you, Bethany. I appreciate the opportunity to get to speak with you and your listeners.
Okay, so to start, can you tell us about yourself and why you're running for city council?
Yeah, so I pretty much grew up in a suburb of Youngstown, a town called Boardman, and came to Columbus originally when I graduated high school for Ohio State. And then, you know, enjoyed Ohio State for way too long. I could probably be a doctor with as long as I was there. And but in the in the time that I was there, I was able to kind of see the outside communities. And when I, in 98, I moved to Los Angeles and lived there for three years. And then this is, you know, the internet's still real new. And so moving back, I decided to move back at the end of the year 2000, since we all lived through Y2K. And when I was moving back, a friend of mine that I'd worked with at the YWCA After School Program said, hey, I'm moving to Las Vegas. Could you sublet my apartment? I live in Westerville. And I said, okay. So I ended up in Westerville and then planted my roots, eventually bought a home and have been here since the end of 2000. I finished, I went back to school for computer information systems. Don't use that degree. Got into banking, spent about a decade in banking, and then decided to transition over to financial advisory. Connected with a small firm here in Westerville. Was there for a few years. And then me and another gentleman, Ryan, my business partner, decided we would like to own our own business. And so we separated and created Jericho Financial, which is where we have been. It'll be eight years, next month will be eight years, so.
Yeah, so why now? Why a run for city council now?
So over the years, one of the things that became really important to me was I started working at Heartland Bank. It was one of the banks that I, I was a branch manager in Westerville. And Heartland had a one owner named Tiny McCombe, real name on his license and birth certificate. But he was semi-retired when I was hired, you know, but he still had his hand on the business, his finger on the pulse. And so he, he came back from Florida after I'd been working for about five, six months. He called me directly and said, hey, Mark, this is Tiny, which I thought was a joke, but it was him. And he said, hey, I need you to come to my office. I need to see what you're about. And that was terrifying. So I went out, and at the time, the headquarters for Heartland was in New Albany. And I went out to his office, and we had a great conversation. He gave me the background of his life, how he grew up in West Virginia, came to Ohio. But anyway, the thing that resonated the most that has stuck with me for the last 20 years is that he said, Mark, the number one thing that you can do and represent Heartland Bank well is you can give to your community and, you know, help your community. And the community will just take care of the business on its own. But set the community as a priority. And the business part, it will take care of itself. And I said, well, okay. And then that led me to the first organization that I jumped into. I was, got involved with the Westerville Education Foundation. Really enjoyed it, great group of people. I was there, I think, 17 years. And it was just a, it was, it was a lot of the movers and shakers in town. I got plugged into the Westerville Chamber, served as a trustee for two and a half terms. I took over a term and then was elected for two additional terms. Basically, it's a negative consent. If you don't hate Mark, you know, let's keep him as a trustee. So I served for that, in that capacity, for two additional terms outside of the appointed term. And then eventually I got plugged in with the Westerville Symphony. Was there seven, eight years for them. And it's just, every single thing I did, I met great people. I got to do good things, got to plan events. And, you know, it's a good feeling when you go somewhere and people recognize you. You know, you walk into a room and you know people because you've done stuff to either help them or you've worked with them. And so that just kind of connected with me. And, you know, a little bit more about myself, I didn't get married until I was 41 years old. And so I was single and had all the time in the world to serve on all these boards and committees and planning events and whatnot. So I definitely took advantage of that. And so I was plugged into a lot of things, planned many events, was always involved in stuff, you know. So that kind of got me started. And along the way, I met some people. Then they said, you know what? You really should run for city council. This is something where we could use people like you. You know, you've got a good head on your shoulders. And, you know, that was never on my radar, but the seed, seed took root and kind of gave me the urge to want to do that. I did run four years ago during COVID, which was, you know, and that being a very challenging, I'd never run a campaign before, but you throw COVID on top of it and the restrictions with how you can interact with people, how you can, you know, get your message out. It was difficult. I learned a lot from that, which I believe will help me in this election very much. I, I lost by about 34 votes is what I missed by. I was super close. Triggered an automatic recount, which is by law because the margin was so small. But ultimately, you know, that didn't work out how I wanted. Ran against some good people, to be honest. They had a good message, everything was, you know, it's a hard pill to swallow, but I'm not mad at anybody for that. You know what I mean? So it was, it was an interesting experience. And then, you know, I kind of, because once your name's in the hat, people then tap you on the shoulder for things. And so a couple of years ago, two years ago, I was asked, hey, we want you to run for school board. And it's like, wow, I mean, that's in my heart. Now, I actually have kids in the district. I, I served on the Education Foundation for years, never had a kid in the district, you know. And I said, wow, that's an opportunity. But, you know, the timing just wasn't good for me. It didn't feel like a good fit. I wasn't just gonna concede to just, hey, do this because we want you to. So now this time around, kind of the same. I basically, I believe there needs to be some change. I think there needs to be a perspective that is being underrepresented in our community and in our city council. And I believe I bring that perspective. And so I've decided, you know what? I took some lessons from my last election, and I'm going to transform the way I run this time. I'm going to transform the way I approach this election. And I was close last time. I should hopefully have a good showing this time and really be in the conversation for the seat that's, one of the seats that's open.
Oh, that's great. Would you mind sharing a lesson or two that you learned from, from the first campaign?
A couple of things, you know. One, you know, engaging people that vote. So the four years ago is very similar to this cycle. And what that means is it's a non-presidential election year. So you have a lot less people turn out than they do for, for presidential elections. Less, less voters come out. You really have to engage them, and you really have to get them motivated to say, hey, I need you to get out and vote. Your voice needs to be heard. I recognize it's, you know, it's just city council to people. It's not the president, but, you know, your vote matters. And so engaging those people that tend to not vote in this particular cycle has been a priority of mine. Engaging people that I think I resonate with, making sure that they get out. And so those are some of the bigger lessons. And then just, you know, I thought I could do it all myself the first time. Again, I'd served on a lot of boards. I, you know, I thought people knew who I was. Oh, I'm gonna slide right in there. And it was humbling to find out, nope, that's not true. And you can't do it yourself. So I've got a good group of people that I'm working with to help get this done, hoping that we have a positive result. But, you know, all we can do is our best and see how it pans out. So that's really the goal there.
Right, I've said this a couple of times, but it's easy to forget how big Westerville really is, even when you are so involved. And there, there are so many wonderful people here, and it's a lot of people to reach out to, for sure.
There are a lot, and it's widespread, you know, it's big. Two counties is a unique feature of Westerville. And the pockets, you get confused because, you know, especially when you're doing petitions the first time. It's like, well, I live in Westerville. It's like, okay, great sign my petition. But I live in Genoa. It's like, ooh, okay, I hear you, but, and I'm glad you're here, but that your petition, your signature on my petition will not work, and you can't vote for me. But I just, yeah, you live in Westerville, I get it. But there's pockets, London Township the same way, you know. They're Westerville, but more from a corporate or a school district standpoint, you know.
Right. Okay, so speaking of your various local roles, from Chamber of Commerce to School PTA and Education Foundation, how has that experience shaped your approach to leadership and community priorities?
Well, I mean, for the most part, when you work with such a diverse group of entities, you know, you've got, you know, the symphony being one. It's very arts-driven. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a logic guy, and this is art. You know, you kind of have that art mentality. You've got the logic mentality. But, but basically, if you have a common goal, you can work together. And there's not, there's no reason to be adversarial with people, you know? We can have different opinions. I'm not your enemy. We're here for the same goal. We're here to make the symphony great. We're here to make the Education Foundation great. We're here to make the PTA experience for the kids wonderful. You know, I've found that there's a diversity in all these groups that I've represented, the Chamber of Commerce as well. I mean, you've got different business types, different business personalities, and, and all these types of entities, you work with different people, but your goal is the same, whatever that goal is for that particular entity. And, you know, if you're willing to listen and not be stuck on your one-sided mind, there's ability to make change, to make, make things better, to keep things that are going well, going well. And so that's probably the biggest thing is, you have two ears and one mouth is the short version of that, you know? Listen a lot and speak when, when necessary, so.
Focus on that shared goal. So speaking from your perspective as a husband and father and stepfather, how can the city council support our youth and families in the city of Westerville?
Yeah, and there's some things that I may say that may not sit well with people, but I feel like our society as a whole has moved away from a merit-based society to entitlement. And that's not working because there's just not enough entitlement for everyone. There's just not enough out there. So how do you, how do you change that? You know, you can't, you can't tantrum yourself into a job because there's only one job available and lots of good candidates. You can't tantrum yourself into that. But you can earn yourself into that. You can pay your dues and earn your way up the ladder. You can have the education, the experience, and the connections to make that job offer available to you. And so what I want my kids to understand is, you know, I'm obviously, you know, a bit, I'm a Gen X guy, you know? So, you know, it's a little different. We're supposed to, we're supposedly rude and blunt, and that hasn't gone, it's true with me, it can be. And I don't mean to be, it's just the way I was raised. But I think, you know, I think we need to get away from everybody is, is going to be treated the same when it comes to opportunities, because it's just not real. We can want that, absolutely, I want that. And you know what? There's a place for that. It's called heaven, and someday I hope to be there, where everybody is exactly the same. But we're on a broken place here right now. And right now, that's just not the way it is. And if I want to afford the best opportunities for my children, I have to instill values of, hey, I need you to be on time and respect other people's time that you've committed to give yours to. I need you to do your best job, and I need you to be focused. And if you're, if someone has blessed you with the opportunity to work for them and earn a living or provide a service, I want you to give it your best. I don't want you just to show up. I don't want you to be angry. I don't want you to create controversy. I want you to just work. And I feel that that, that type of mentality is gained through competitive sports, through, through music programs, you know, where you have chairs in the bands and then the symphonies. And, you know, they know, you know, the symphony's trying to put out their best product, and they're not going to put a terrible musician as the first chair to do solos. That's just the way it is. No matter how much you get mad, that's the way it is. And so that's how life works, too. You know, businesses are not out to just hire the worst candidate who shows up late, who causes drama, who doesn't know the job, who doesn't put in the extra learning. That's not how that works. A business wants the most return of investment on that employee. And I want to make sure my kids are equipped with those skills. And I'm not saying they're the smartest kids. I'd love, you know, every parent, of course, thinks they are, but, you know, I have to be realistic. But I can equip them with the qualities that are non-tangible, that are, that are very valuable to employers and to communities and to those around us. So that's, I would like to see a lot more merit-based sports. I don't, I don't believe in participation trophies. I believe in merit-based trophies. Hey, first place, you've earned it, and you should be celebrated. That's what I believe. And I believe that that builds character. Because if you win all the time, then you never, you don't, you don't understand. You're, you don't know how to function with not winning. And that leads to tantrums, that leads to breakdowns, that leads to mental anxiety. But if you were shown that from the start, hey, it's okay not to win. You gave it your best. Now you know a path to get better. Now you see how you can improve. And if that's something you want to pursue, you have the ability to learn and improve. But you don't just get to have the benefits of winners when you're not giving a winning production or a winning service. So those are some things that I really think we need to make sure still exist. And, and there's nothing wrong with coming in second, third, or last. You tried, you know, you tried. That's where I'm at. You're giving it your best and, you know, I don't, Michael Jordan's famous for missing, you know, more shots than he made. But he made the ones that counted, and he worked and put in the time. These are the stories we want to hear, not, not, hey, this person, you know, threw the best tantrum, so now they're in charge. No thanks. I, I want, I want somebody who's gonna work for, you know, fit into society well and be an asset.
It's how you respond, right? There are so many things you cannot control.
Correct.
It's how you respond to those. See here, as a local business owner, what are the key challenges and opportunities you see for small businesses in Westerville?
Yeah, I mean, and so, yeah, with a business in Westerville, I love the way that, you know, our community is set up. I could avoid 270, 70, I could avoid every freeway for the rest of my life if I really don't want to visit people out of town. I could do that, you know? You have everything here. I live, work, and worship in town. That's a beautiful thing, that you can be in your community with every aspect of your life. You can work with the people you work with. You can behave your neighbors. And then you can go to, go to church or whatever type of faith-based thing or hobby that you have that, you know, with like-minded people. It's all here. So that, from that standpoint, the Westerville's also big enough where you can run businesses, have competitors, and you can both be quite, quite successful. It's not, there can only be one of these in the town. You can have multiple people. And you don't, you don't want to look at them as competition because it's, there's plenty to go around. There's plenty of people to go around. There's, there's plenty of business for everyone, and there's plenty of perspectives. Some, some people are going to resonate different with others. Now, from the standpoint of Westerville, you know, there are some things where zoning tends to be an issue, I think, for, for businesses. You know, we looked into build, we rent our office space, and we were looking at maybe getting a building. And the pricing was just out of whack. And it was, that was not the city's fault. But along the way, I've had conversations with people I know. And, you know, there's times where they, there's, they, they want to make zoning difficult. They wanted, you know, I, I look at the government, I look at the city as my employee, because my taxpayers, my tax dollars and your tax dollars fund the government. And then to me, the purpose of the government, I wrote this down, governments are created to provide order, security, essential services that individuals cannot easily provide for themselves and promote the general welfare. And so as a city, I believe that the best business model is listen to the people in the city that pay your bills, that pay your taxes, you know, to you, and work with them, not against them. Don't be an obstacle. I think, I think every, every interaction with the city should go something along the lines of, hey, let me hear your concern. Okay, I don't want to hear no. I want to hear, well, here's some options, or here's a way I can help you get there. I don't want to hear, no, you just can't do that, or it's just not possible. That's the wrong attitude, and a business would not live that way. I cannot live that way. Hey, I, I want to come in and plan for retirement. Nope, you can't, you can't do it. I don't think so. You know, people aren't going to want to work with you. But because the, the city has the advantage of tax revenue coming in that's forced upon us, that doesn't mean that they can't take the perspective of, they still work for us. And that includes every aspect of the city. Your dollars, your salaries, your benefits, everything is provided through taxpayer dollars. And you're a business, and you should be providing solutions, not obstacles, when it comes to business development. And I'm not saying that they do. I'm just saying, you know, I think this needs to be, the answer is yes. What's the question? And see where it lands. I think that's my perspective. Those are the things I'd like to see as a business owner. And I'm not saying there's a lot of that, that's not like that, but there is some that I would like to see adjusted.
And so recognizing, again, how, how big Westerville is and how expansive and how many people we have, how would you approach a concern or a problem that is brought to you that impacts residents in different ways? How do you weigh all of the, the different community members that we have in Westerville?
Absolutely. I mean, first and foremost, you know, you want to find out, is this a one-off issue? Is this something that's just particular to one person? And is it reasonably fixable with just addressing it on an individual basis? And then the larger the scale that the issue can be, then, you know, then maybe there needs to be some sort of discussion at a bigger level of like, well, we've got X number of people now in the city or X percentage of the people in the city that are dealing with this issue, and it's actually an issue now. So how do we resolve that? And, you know, for me, it's going to be open communication. You know, like I said, with the two ears, one mouth, I want to hear. And I may not always respond with what you want to hear, but, you know, I also don't, I, I will, I will resonate, it will resonate with me. I will think upon it, and I will, you know, especially with a council, you're running it through six other people. So, and then you've got the resources of the city attorney, the city managers, the business development. You've got all kinds of different people that are experts, the police, the fire. You have all these other people that are the experts that you have the ability to then work with and come up with a solution for whatever the issue is with experts. Like, I don't have to be the expert on everything, but I just have to know where to go to ask the question, is this reasonable? And if it's not, what can we do to at least get closer to that? How can we get closer to that? Or, you know, help me understand why this is a problem. And this, this person or these group, they're angry, or they're upset, or they're, they're not. How can we, how can we mitigate this and come to a compromise, if not a full solution?
So with your professional background in banking, financial planning, and tax preparation, how would these skills help ensure Westerville's taxpayer dollars are used effectively?
Man, that's a great question. And, and, you know, coincidentally, just yesterday, there was a news article about the STRS pensions here in Ohio. That's the state teachers' retirement. And I know that's, it's different from, but, but state pensions are state pensions. They're severely underfunded, severely. I mean, and, and what that means, so I mentioned to you that I grew up in Youngstown, and I have a handful of clients from Youngstown, just from growing up there. And it's a union town. A lot of the people are blue collar, they're in unions. And those unions provide pensions. And I had one client in particular. He, he worked as a security guard in a steel plant for close to 50 years. He was getting a little over $2,000 a month from that pension. And the pension became insolvent, and he went in retirement. It wasn't like he could go out and, and, and he was, you know, a young 20-year-old and could just get another wage. He was retired, and he put in his time. He paid his dues, and he paid them faithfully, and he was entitled to a pension. But that pension became insolvent, and he went from $2,000 a month to $200. And how's he going to make ends meet? Because that's not going to work. And so from my standpoint, you know, we do have to address that pensions maybe are something that are very expensive to taxpayers and, and very expensive. But what other solutions can we look to to reward the employees for a great service record? You know, and provide for them in their retirement when they've paid their dues as employees and served in the city very well for however many years they've been, they've been here. But also, at the same time, be fiscally responsible because, you know, while we love to have pensions, and, and there are opportunities privately, you know, pretty much if you throw government into something, it's going to go wrong. It's the way I kind of look at it. But if you privately have pensions, you know, there's opportunity where that's less likely to occur. Or, you know, move to a different structure, at least, you know, look at other opportunities, because part of, you know, one of the biggest expenses for the city is employee benefits. And it's, they're, they're entitled to them. I believe if you, if you were working for a business or a city or whoever you're working for, there, there should be benefits. And I would not ever say we should take those away. But we have to look at the pension as far as, is this really a good long-term solution? Not just for the city financially, but in the event that that, that becomes insolvent, are we setting up our employees and retired people to have a huge pay cut in, in the time that they can least afford it? Because we trusted a government to run the pension system that is obviously not doing a good job. The stats from this, I underline those. My own state in Ohio, Equitable Institute's state teachers' retirement is between $20 and $30 billion in debt and will be unable to pay back the teachers who funded it throughout their career. It also noted, Equitable also noted that a stunning 44% of the unfunded liabilities are from underperforming investments. You know, how do you go to someone and say, hey, you worked for it? This is what you're entitled to, but we can't deliver? I think that's a big deal. You know, one, there are better solutions, I think, for everyone when it comes to funding retirement, funding benefits while you're working. That will also have a better degree of insurance that they will be there when the time comes needed, when retirement occurs. So I'm not saying we pull the cord off pensions, but eventually, maybe we need to start thinking about phasing into a different avenue for people. Because I want to make sure that if you work 30-plus years for the city, that you get, you can afford to live in the city on the pension that you've earned while working, and, and you can reap the benefits of your hard work for the city. So those are some things I can bring to the table. What's going to happen, more than, more than likely, is, is there won't be that solution. There will be, hey, we'll just raise taxes. Well, that's going to make people mad, too. So, you know, why don't we be proactive? Find a solution that's a win for everybody, and not make everyone that lives there angry because we just raised their taxes, you know? Or bring it up again, or threaten it, oh, if we don't get to raise taxes, we still have these pensions to fund, but we're going to shut the rec center, we're going to shut the pools, we're going to have to start selling parks to raise revenue. I don't want to hear that, and nobody else does either. And I'm not saying that's even on the table right now, but I'm just telling you that STRS, which is the state's teachers' program for retirement, is in trouble. And it's not just, that's not the only pension. That's the only one mentioned in this article. There's all kinds of different state pension programs, whether it's STRS, whether it's OPERS, PERS, SIRS. But we want to make sure that our people, our good people, are taken care of.
I feel like we could do a whole separate episode.
I could.
We'll circle back to the campaign. You've stressed the importance of strong city services, safety resources, and efficient maintenance. What specific ideas do you have to improve service delivery and to better support our resources like police, fire, and EMS?
Yeah, I mean, I think ideally, we always have, you know, what are the best, the best equipment available for those officers in the form of safety, in the form of communication? And that's not just officers, but EMS, fire, emergency services. I believe our parks and rec people should also have the best, you know... I'm on a parade committee, and we had a meeting yesterday. And they talked about, you know, in the past, when you, like Fourth Fridays, if you've been to Fourth Friday, or you've been to events, they shut down the streets with dump trucks. They'll park a big dump truck in front of the ends of the streets so that you can't, you know, get through. It's like, hey, with people, you know? So they've just, they're expecting delivery of these... And the way they described them was like trash cans that hook together. And it takes, basically, a tank couldn't get through these things. So, but somehow, it's going to be easier, it's more mobile, and less, you know, more appealing to the eye than the dump truck, I guess. But that type of equipment, I'm all in favor of that stuff. I want our officers to receive the best training. I want them to have the best, you know, basically, because if they have the best people, they have the best equipment, they have the best training, then we've got the safest community. And that's really what I believe we need, you know, safety. You know, our officers, I have the highest respect for. I love the department. There's, you know, I think, as a whole, people can agree that our police department is an asset to the community by far. It's, there's not even a question about that. I think our parks are an asset. There's pretty much, you know, I knock on wood, and I really haven't had much need for the police, but I interact with them more than I would, you know, I just know a lot of them. The fire, I thank God I've never needed them either, you know? But I assume they're all really good, you know? So, you know, I want them to have the best equipment. I want them to have the best training, the best people. And so, you know, those are the ways that I think, you know, that needs to go. And depending on, you know, what our resources are, let's make the most advantageous purchases, most advantageous investments into those particular, all those entities. And again, I go back to the essential services that individuals cannot easily provide for themselves. And that's what our government is for. We're a pool of resources to provide these things, period, that benefit everybody. And so, you know, and that's 98% of city council. That is, hey, let's approve this budget, let's approve this proposal, let's approve, you know, this need from the experts in that field that say we need it. Does it make sense? Is it fiscally responsible? That's the main job of city council. And I think that leads into your next question, is stay in your lane. It does. And so let's just go right there. That's the goal, that's the role of city council, period. The government is an entity that is a pool of resources to be used for the benefit of all the citizens in that community, period. Whether it's state, local, federal, I see that's where the government ends. Now, we have NGOs. NGOs would be, you know, non-government organizations. That could be a church, that could be a charity, that could be a club, that could be an alliance, that could be all kinds of things. That is private money. Why? Because those entities are to serve the groups, not the whole, but the smaller groups. And I believe that our council, that I believe a lot of government is confused about those roles. I believe the government is here to serve all the people. Some people are finding that it's better to serve groups, and that's not what we're here to do. That doesn't satisfy everyone. You're spending my tax dollars on things I don't agree with. You're spending other people's tax dollars that don't agree with. That's not for everybody. That's staying out of your lane. You need to stay in your lane. Be part of that group, 100%. Donate your personal money, 100%. Do whatever you want with your personal money. But the group resources are meant for the group benefit, or for, as a city as a whole. The city dollars are meant for the city as a whole, to benefit everybody as a whole. These NGOs, and again, I put churches in, NGO's got in a negative term, it just basically means non-governmental organization. But churches, which I'm a proud follower of Jesus, and I go to a church very faithfully, it's a non-government organization. And they have a goal, is to teach, you know, about their faith. But other organizations, whether it be a baseball league, whether it be the boys, whatever it is, they all service a smaller group within the city. And that should not be the role of a councilperson to take one of those groups and focus their attention on the entire city. It's no good. You know, you told me you had children, right? And, you know, one of the things that I don't think the government has any role in is parental rights, zero. I'm the parent, it's my child. So, you know, say I came to you and said, Bethany, I'm on city council now, I got elected. And I said, you know what? In my opinion, in the groups I belong to, you know, kids, they need to have unlimited screen time on their technology, unlimited. And if you restrict any of that, you're in trouble. I'm going to sanction you, I could take your kids away, I could make all kinds of legal woes for you because you're letting your kids only have one hour of time. That is unreasonable, Bethany. These kids know better than you, the parent. They know better. That's unbelievably irresponsible, because children would eat candy for every meal if you gave them the opportunity.
Sure.
Mine would. I mean, maybe there's a few good apples that'll eat the salads and the good food. My kids would eat candy for sure. So our role as the parent is to keep those things in line, where to parent. And for the city to come in and tell you how to parent, that's not their role. They're out of their lane, stay in the lane.
So the example I saw on your website regarding that was the conversion therapy. So can you tell us a little bit more about what that means for the city of Westerville?
And I'm not, you know, here's the thing, I don't know that that's even for me. I don't know that I would ever go down that path, frankly. But it's just, every good idea starts out small. You know, this is going to help, this, every, but it always then, it's a snowball effect. It's not that I'm against, you know, that rule. It's the fact that the rule is there. Because that just opens the door, well, we did this one, and now we're going to introduce a screen time issue. And now we're going to introduce, well, these kids, you know, they don't play enough sports, you know, if you're looking at it from my standpoint. They don't do enough physical activity. You must make your children exercise four hours a day, or you are going to be in trouble. That's not for me to tell you, that's not for me to give anyone. So it's just about the precedent being set. That's the important issue. Because you don't belong there, that's not your role. You are not the parent, you're not. Get out of Dodge, stay out of the lane.
Sure.
And it's just, it's about the precedent. And that's where I'm, that's the example right now, and that's the most recent one. I didn't go back for 150 years and look, but I believe that's the first one that I'm aware of. It's not necessarily the rule, it's the fact that you did it. It's not your place at all.
The lines get blurred with family, obviously. It is so personal, and there's always a discussion of how the community and how the schools contribute to raising your kids and the values that you teach at home, and all of those things. But just circle back on the conversion therapy before we move on. I am curious, is it that the ban is that, from a business perspective, that that is not to be offered in Westerville, right? And so it's not so much entering into the homes saying that parents can't put their children in conversion therapy, but businesses can't offer that or conduct that?
Right. Again, let me just communicate my point on that. The issue isn't the problem. I don't have, I didn't look deep enough into, whether it's the business, it's the fact that you crossed the line. You're not my parent, you're not the parent, you're not. So keep out of your, keep your nose out of it. Keep your nose out of it, stay in your lane. You know, if that's not for you, great. But it might be for some families, and I don't want that opportunity removed because they believe that, as a parent, for some reason, circumstances are different in every family. They're different. And you don't have the right to dictate your political beliefs, your personal beliefs, on a family that has nothing to do with you and may have a different set of beliefs. That's just, it's that simple. And so, again, it's not necessarily the rule, it's the precedent set by the rule. No rules. Parents have the ultimate say in how to raise their children. And that's why we set age limits, and 18 gives those children the opportunity to forego a parent's influence on their lives. But until then, I'm responsible for all their issues. I'm responsible if they damage something. I'm responsible, you know, if there are chaos in society, I'm responsible. So I want to manage that the best way I know how as the parent. And that means you keep your nose out of it, because it's not your family, it's not your child, and you don't know what's best.
I have one more example I want to touch on from your website, then I want to get back to the services and the budget. So you also expressed concern about the proposal to remove the invocation before council meetings. So can you explain why you believe keeping that is important for the community?
100%. Yeah, it's a Freedom of Speech Amendment that's been passed by the Supreme Court. I mean, the way you look at it, it's open to anybody. I've had conversations with some of the council members that are very, very much in agreement with me that that is something that needs to remain. You know, fortunately, this hasn't happened. But if you had somebody that basically believed in Satan and wanted to have that, they have that time, they're available to sign up, it's an open sign up. It's not exclusive to a religion or a faith. It's open to everyone, it's a freedom of expression. And basically, from my perspective, if you're going to use that time, and whether or not you agree with the faith, and you invite whatever you believe, you invite your mind to be quieted so you're able to think better if you don't believe in God. But for me, that time is an opportunity to invite God into a situation where we need him. Where we need a higher power to bring peace, preservation, to reduce the animosity towards people with different opinions. We need a God for peace, me, I need that. And so I think others would agree with that, and we'll find out when we vote. But I think enough of people may have thoughts that, you know, hey, if someone's going to basically offer a word in favor of a good opportunity for this group to come together and serve the community, why would we jeopardize that? Who are we? Why would we do that?
Who offers the invocation, or who gives it at the meetings?
Yeah, so typically, it's been pastors, but there's a sign up sheet. So you can, you just basically have to sign up. It's not like it's, oh, it's got to be this guy from this church, or this woman from... Anybody can sign up, it's a freedom of speech issue. And basically, I look at it as a moment to basically ask for some sort of blessing on the conversation. You know, for me, it would be from God, from, you know, for others, it could be from whatever they believe in, to, but something they believe in, to bring the outcome to be a good situation. So that's the benefit of that.
Okay, great. Okay, I want to get back to the budget, I want to get back to services. So what I'm, I want to make sure I'm hearing you and understanding correctly. I'm hearing that you would, within the budget, prioritize our services that we were talking about before. So is there anything in the budget or that has been proposed that you would first look at to reconsider?
100%. So, you know, the city has several streams of revenue. You know, obviously, we've got tax dollars that we pay. But there's also a situation that we have called the, it's called the VAT tax, or you may have heard of it as the bed tax. And what that is, is a 6% tax that hotels put on their guests who, within the city limits. And that, those funds are then given directly to the city. And those funds are, I believe they're split between the city for their use, and then split between city council to spend in a discretionary way via committees. And that community partnership has been highly partisan. I would encourage you to look at them, I've got them, they'll be on my website soon. But I've got the list of businesses that, or the NGOs that have been awarded funds. And there are some that are absolutely for everybody, and there's some that are very specific to partisan groups. I don't believe that should be the case. I think everyone should benefit from those dollars because they're part of the city revenue. So that's something that I think we need to change. You know, they have committees. There's a committee that decides and proposes the way those funds are spent. Well, one of the committee members' whole job is DEI. And I'm not a big fan of DEI, the city is kind of moving away from it. It's still listed on the website, but the DEI director is the acting parks director. So you can see the writing on the wall there. I believe everybody's, again, merit-based. I look at everyone as a business owner, as a city employee, I want the best person. I don't care what you look like, what you believe, I don't care, I don't care what you do. But if you do the job the best, I want you. I want you, I don't care anything else about you. I have nothing to say about it. But if you're the best person, I want you. So...
Isn't that the whole purpose of DEI? Where that is the point where we want to make sure that the best qualified person is in the role despite their background and other challenges they've faced?
No, it doesn't seem like, it seems like you want to give an advantage from the beginning of the application process to somebody who has a quality or trait that is put on the DEI list. And I think I want to look at the education, I want to look at the experience, I want to look at the ability of that person to do the best job. And I don't care what they look like. So I'm going to look, I'm going to look at the person, and I'm not going to look at any of their physical traits that may distinguish them from another person, I don't care. As a business owner, as a taxpayer, I want the most return on investment that I can get. And that means having the best people, period.
Yeah, this has definitely been a topic that's supercharged in the political climate right now. But in so many ways, we want the same things, and I, sometimes you come up, there's, there are phrases and there are campaigns that just, you know, turn confusing and muddy. But I think at the end of the day, we both want the best person in the role.
100%. And that's what I mean, I'm getting the impression we're on different sides of that, but we can have an open discussion, and I'd love to hear, well, talk to me more. And it sounds like you have the ability to do that as well, which I really appreciate. But let's come to a compromise. Basically, our goal is to have the best people for the best amount of money spent. So why substitute that for any other, what's the benefit there? There's no benefit.
How do you recognize that some groups of people have been at a disadvantage? Women, as an example, right? You know, up until recent decades, haven't had the same rights and privileges as men. But obviously, you can talk about any particular group. So just in general, like, do you recognize those challenges? And how can we, as a society, you know, get past those challenges to make sure that everyone who is qualified is on the same playing field?
Yeah, go ahead, use the NGOs, the non-government organizations, because I want my tax dollars spent for the best people. I don't see differences. Again, I've hired hundreds, if not over 1,000 people in my time in banking and all the other jobs I've had in my life. It's never come up to me, you know, if you show up on time, if you know your job and you're good, and you make me a good return on investment, you're hired, I don't care what you look like. You know, again, I alluded, I'm a bit older. And again, I grew up in Youngstown, which is a very blue-collar town, graduated in 1990, came to Columbus. I had never in my life seen a gay person before, ever. It was, it just wasn't a thing back then. And I, I don't know if you're too young to even know, but there used to be a place called City Center Mall. It was downtown.
Yeah.
It was like, it was, it was the jam, man, back in the day, in the early 90s, man. That's where you went to shop. And I was lucky enough to get a job there, we're in college. And I had worked in a men's high fashion store. And I was the minority, I was a straight white male. And, you know, everybody else was not. And I'll never forget, like, some of the best friends that I made at that time, they were, everybody was wonderful. It was never about, hey, I'm different, worship me, or hey, I'm different, you got to... It's like, hey, man, you're just cool, let me learn about you. And I'll never forget, I had a great conversation, I was driving home, one of my friends, he was a gay guy, I was driving him home after work, and I didn't know how to get to his house, and we're pulling up to an intersection. And I said, hey, Mike, I don't know where to go, should I just keep going straight? And he looked at me and he goes, it's forward, not straight. Always go forward, not straight. And I never, that always resonated as funny with me. You know, those types of things, give me the best person, you know? Give me the best person. And, you know, I don't think, I'm all for anti-racism, 100% are anti-inclusive. Like, I don't want someone excluded for those qualities, but I want them on the same level playing field, meaning, does the education match? Does the attitude match? Does the job experience match? Those are, that's what matters to me. That's what should matter to anybody, because that's what's going to give us the best return on investment.
Yeah, okay. Three more questions for you. How do you see Westerville evolving over the next decade? And of course, what role should the council play in guiding that growth?
Yeah, so, you know, from my business standpoint, you know, we're going to have the largest wealth transfer probably in the next 10 years in the form of the baby boomers phasing out. The baby boomers were an excellent group of savers. They were, for the most part, reliable and responsible with their money. They carry little debt, they had the pensions, that, you know, their cost of living was lower, to be fair. You know, they were able to save because, you know, the wages were better than the inflation and all those types of things, they were just set up really well. But that, they're going to be passing that wealth on in the next 10 years, 10 to 15 years, to a younger generation. And I want to make it so, you know, our community is continuing to provide the amenities that are appealing to everyone.
Sure.
You know, we have amazing parks, we have amazing rec centers, you know, the safety in the city is wonderful. You know, all the, all the things that the city can can control through the taxpayer resources, I wanna make sure it's at the highest level, and so that it's appealing for those that are coming in to say, man, wow, Westerville really has a great community here. Look at, you know, I live over by the dam, and you know, we, it's, we get to look at the water. Every time I pull out of my neighborhood, I'm right at the dam, I look at the water. You know, my kids and I'll walk across, it's too, bit too hot, I'm not gonna lie. But when it's less hot, we'll go walking, and especially you get across the dam, and you feel that breeze that comes across when you're, like, that type of stuff is just awesome to have in your, in your community. That's just right there, and all the parks and bike trails and and the good people. One of the things I would like to, again, going back to staying in your lane, if we create a partisan government, if we have a partisan, if we present a council that maybe is unappealing to half the country, to half the citizens, then we lose that diversity. We lose that diversity as a community, we lose that ability to hear a soundboard for opinions that are different than ours. And I think as an intelligent and pe, people, we need to be able to hear other ideas and not be offended. We need to be able to hear other ideas and say, well, where are you coming from? Give me some insight on that. We don't have to agree. But I think by keeping the the non-partisanship of the city council, as it's intended in the in the charter, to remain not partisan, that I think that leaves the appeal open to getting everybody in the community that, you know, Westerville's a nicer community, I I say afford, but Westerville is a nicer community than some others. And so that houses go for more money, and then, and there's an affordability factor to being here. But I want it to be only housing, like, I don't want it to be taxes that are are a discouragement. I don't want it to be, well, there's no safety or, you know, any other service that we can provide for those tax dollars to be an obstacle for people wanting to be here. Because the more people that want to be here, it helps the citizens by the values of their home and the employment availability and things that are in the community.
Okay, what do you love most about Westerville, if you haven't already mentioned it?
Well, yeah, so I I did mention it, but I'll revisit it. So I live, work and worship here. In addition to that, I don't, I mean, like, I can avoid the freeways, you know, I I I love not being on the freeway. But but then, you know, throw into, I've got all the community I could possibly want in here, all the, you know, I can do all the activities I wanna do, but the amenities, I can, I can shop at four different grocery stores, three different grocery stores, one stone throw from where I'm at, three or four Krogers within a mile or two. You know, where else are you gonna get that? I mean, convenience, wow. You know, I could ride my bike, I won't, you know, I could, I could walk, probably too, I won't do that either, I'll drive. But it's all super close, you know, if you need something, you know, midway through meal prep, it's like, oh, no big deal, I'll run to the store and get it. I don't have to drive 87 minutes each way and come back to cold whatever I started, you know. I love that, I love that, you know, inside of communities, we can have, you know, when you take politics out of the communities, the neighbors, my neighborhood is awesome. Everybody is awesome, and we don't all agree on much. But you know what, we have really cool, uh, community gatherings and, you know, uh, it doesn't matter, you can just, what you're here for is each other. You can, you know, you can think about the unifying things, and mostly unifying, you know, music, sports, uh, movies, you know. There's things that can kind of unify everyone regardless of where you you fall on a political spectrum. I I wish, as a community, we could figure out a way to tone down the political spectrum, because it is divisive, and sometimes people don't wanna hear you just because they think you're one belief that's different from theirs. But, you know, I'll tell you, in my neighborhood, and and I lived, you know, I'm, I, when I, four years ago, I was in Autumn Woods, which is right off of Hempstead, I lived right on Hempstead, and that community was the same way. Everybody was awesome, it didn't matter, you know, how different you were politically, your neighbors were your neighbors, and they were really cool. Um, and that's how, that's the community I live in now, I'd love to, and I think, I think that's how it is everywhere else. I can't speak for the other neighbors, I can only speak for mine. But I've been to, you know, like Ryan, my business, I've been to his neighborhood, everybody is awesome, you know, everybody gets along. It doesn't matter, you you're not bringing politics into it, and that's the whole point of stay in your lane. Keep the politics, the national noise out of here. We basically just need to provide the services that individuals cannot provide themselves, that that our tax dollars are pulled to provide. And that's what I love about it, I mean, it seems like it trickles down, I mean, you get get some people, there, you know, it's not very many, but it's gonna be everywhere, there'll always be somebody you disagree with no matter where you fall. And that could be, that could be in in any situation, not just your community, it could be at work, it could be on TV, it could be wherever. But for the most part, I love the community, everybody here is wonderful. If you are face to face with people, they're much more open to learning about you and not judging you based on what you look or or, you know, things like that.
Right, right, no, I I appreciate that, I appreciate all of your time here, Mark. I think this entire conversation has been a great reminder, one of what city, the city of Westerville is all about. And then also just focusing on our people, right? I I think as a community, as a nation, we need to learn how to communicate through our differences and how to to remain productive through that, all because we're part of the same community. We all have a shared goal, we want it to be the best, um, and and come together in that way, so I think that's great.
You got it, Bethany, that's the lens we're looking for.
Yeah. Okay, so where can we find you while you're campaigning?
Yep, so faubelforwesterville.com, F A U B E L F O R westerville.com. And then I have a Facebook page, which has more of the, the the website is more, you know, fixed information, and the the social media is more like, hey, here's a pic of me, you know, so, but the Faubel for Westerville on Facebook as well. So I'd appreciate a follow, and if, and I'd love your insight, there's communication options on the website to email me, and I'd love to hear from people and hear what they have to say.
Well, thank you again, Mark, this has been, um, really great getting to know you.
Well, you're really cool. Do you, are you the producer as well? Are you the producer behind this?
I do it all, I'm learning it all, I, every podcast is a learning experience. So it's, it's, it's fun, otherwise I would not be doing this.
Yes.
I'll say it that way.
Again, it was a pleasure, I I I, you know, ultimately, I believe we're probably a little different from political beliefs, but we had a really great conversation, and that's what I'd love to see more of in the community.